Okay, I knew it was something there.
Right, well, one year I was the vice president, so I had to go through the whole thing.
Oh.
First time I was president, so I just had to say, uh, Mr. Vice President, will you please, uh, forget, forget what it was, but, uh.
Sure.
When it's, uh, fitting that you picked the advisor.
Yeah, we, we can still hear his voice. It was a thin FFA advisory. He was a good teacher. Good program. I think every kid in this world should go through that stuff.
Yeah. You can tell the ones that did, when they become adults.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, yeah.
So did you get your state degree and all that stuff anywhere? No?
No, I just showed up for class.
You just showed up for class, so?
Yeah. There were, there were, uh, yeah, there were, uh... I don't know if anybody ever made it to the state though. It's a long time.
I have the American degree, I made it to the top.
Made it to the top, cool, cool, yeah. Yeah, that's...
They actually, uh, let's see, two of the canal sort of state, the state officers.
Oh.
Dean Wallace and Kerry was.
They were really involved, damn right.
There's a group of brothers, the Hall brothers?
Yeah.
Four of them, all four of them were state officers.
Oh, be darned. Wow.
That looks like sibling rivalry there.
Yeah, slightly. I said to creep better than you. Why did you set me up to? Remember when they got, you, you just like the Schrader family when they got, uh...
How's that?
All them siblings get together around the table and then Dad has to straighten them off.
Not a problem there. We come from a big family, believe it or not, and we get along pretty dang good.
That's a, that's a bright, how many, how many brothers, sisters?
I have lots. I have, I've met families that have two or three and they don't get along as good as we do.
Yeah, yeah.
I have eight brothers and nine sisters. Two sisters have passed, so I only have seven left.
Okay, sure. I knew, I knew it, I knew he had more brothers than themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those boys, my favorite quote, one of my favorites, I have several, but one of my favorite quotes is my older brother. We were having some sibling rivalry. And I said, I'm gonna drive, and he said, no, you're not, I'm older. And he was right, because that was the rules. But I contested him physically. And, uh, we, we fought pretty hard for a long time. Jumped in the truck and locked the doors, so I couldn't get in anymore. I wasn't done yet. He rolled down the window, and this is my famous quote, Marvin, I'm tired of beating the heck out of you. I said, well, this is where I feel. I had to laugh, you know, when he said that, I'm tired of beating the heck out of you. And we had rules that we never, ever hit anybody in the face, not once. We never hurt anyone. We weren't there to hurt. Make a point, yes, but not to hurt.
So he started up the truck and let you run behind and bark right away?
He said, you make up your mind, or you will walk.
Or you will walk.
It's six miles.
Oh, okay. I hope you, I hope you did the right choice, Mark.
Uh, I didn't walk.
Yeah.
Are we ready? Really? Uh, yeah. I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to request that we remove the approval of minutes for nine sixteen and nine twenty-one, twenty-two. Those are not available at this time.
They'll be on the next, uh, agenda?
Yes.
I want to discuss that after the second. I'll second that for discussion.
Need a motion first. Or it's just a, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there any other changes to the agenda, or?
Somebody would have to move that.
Uh, no, I ha- I have nothing to add, so I, I'll accept the agenda with the deletion of the minutes.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marv, discussion?
Okay, uh, I'm not in disagreement, but I want to make it aware that this is in violation of sentry code. There are extenuating circumstances. We had a lot of business going on last week and, uh, the Daco convention, and I believe that's the reason that we're making this motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, moving on to the bills?
Okay. Move over a stall here.
Move over a stall?
I'll try and shine something there.
Oh, yeah. They don't give that a lot, boy, do they?
No, no, I don't know why, but they don't, you know, back in the day, they used to take the crooked, their crooked lumber down. They were building up, and that's what they cut the rest of, uh, back in the day.
I know, yeah. So it used to be, uh, throw waste stuff?
Yeah, well, I write. So you check to see what all bananas and sandwiches do pop.
Okay.
Since it's only nine thousand dollars worth. Hungry crew. Better than the meat, you know?
They probably still use that crooked lumber for those last...
Well, they just, Marv, cut the curves out of it, and then they sell it as straight lumber.
But they use the straight ones for toothpicks.
Yeah.
Well, suppose we could get triple A for tow insurance, could we?
Hmm, that would be interesting, would it? Um, no, because it's an individual's car, he'd have to have it.
No, I know, I'm just...
Conjecture. We couldn't do it because we're retaining it.
That's right.
Yeah, this is high. Where is our holding yard for towing these vehicles?
Do they go to the landfill?
Landfill.
I think it's the landfill, isn't it?
I know there's some up there, but they also, is that city that's at the, uh, dump grounds? There's, uh, vehicles there too.
Which, which city?
If it's a city, then it's either Beulah PD or Hazen PD that uses those.
Mm-hmm.
The county uses the landfill.
Isn't that seeming a little absorbent?
I don't know where it was held from, too, but...
Beulah's is up by the transfer station.
Yeah, it used to be by the old mine building, but that burned down.
This one says to Stanton Holding Yard. That's not the landfill, right?
They've been known to bring some to the court, or to the sheriff's department area.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah, the motor's stuck.
Well, it's usually a pretty, you know, there.
Yeah.
Is that the last one or first one?
Was that, yeah, air conditioners were probably, uh, full at a hot point.
Some of these vouchers, Samantha, don't have the fund numbers listed on them. Typically, we do, so I'm just curious what's...
I'd have to ask Glenn.
These are flash drives from Amazon, it says Shelley. No fund number on it. There's another one for two hundred and eighty dollars and no fund number on it. Rest of them all seem to have it. Chairman Reed doesn't have it on there. I'm going to approve this. I would like you to please consider sending a note that we need to include those numbers on our vouchers, so we know where it's charged to. It isn't something that I ever see that's habitual, it's, you guys do a good job of it, but missed a couple.
Well, really, the departments that are sending in the vouchers should be adding it to, to them. We just try to catch them if they're not...
Typically, I think I see your guys' stamp on there. Nope. Nope, it's typed in there, so you have, you're correct. So anyhow, it's, like I say, it's not a habitual thing, it's just they got missed, but... Remind them. We're applying super union, nobody knows who that is. There's no, nothing on it, so we're paying a bill to somebody for something, I mean, they, so that's what we want, but...
I understand the importance of it, thank you, Mark.
Is that, so you do that before you get out of the tractor?
I guess.
I have one of those. Have a cab on my utility tractor, it's a industrial. You gotta get in there and just get, just set. When you get out, you better be careful, because it's hard to pull your foot out.
Don't be in a hurry?
No, pay attention to what you're doing, or you're gonna end up on your face, with your foot still up there. Has anyone heard how long they're gonna continue to haul coal?
I heard through the end of the month, end of November.
Because I heard last week that they were gonna stop. Truck drivers told me that, but apparently, end of the month, you heard?
I heard that a couple of weeks ago, end of October, November first, when the, I guess I don't know what, November first is a Tuesday. But, I mean, I drove by there yesterday on the way home, and I actually have a pile again, so that's making progress.
Spoonful at a time.
Yeah.
A train car probably holds like three or four of those truckloads.
Yeah, like four. Train cars usually, on average, about a hundred tons.
See this tire wheel, it makes me smile.
Yeah.
We got the tires in our Buick in, the older they got, the noisier they got. My wife was just, oh, man, they're terrible. I said, well, we're not gonna replace them till October, because I wanna get them nicer. So, today, she was up at eight o'clock and took the car. She wanted to make darn sure they got changed.
Yeah, it takes, I was just calculating, it takes roughly two hundred and fifty semi loads for one train.
That's huge. Are they doing more than one train a week?
They usually do two trains a day.
Mm-hmm. So we're talking five hundred truckloads a day?
Well, two, two, uh, well, it'd be two hundred and fifty to equate to what one train load is. I mean, the train's still running, it's just...
I didn't know that it was, that it was...
It goes by my house a couple of times every day.
With coal on it?
Yep. Well, twice with coal, twice without.
Yeah. It's a wasted time.
Kind of like marble round.
Does he haul the orange, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta have a new one that's blown by with coal, and then it comes right back, so it's always for that. Forgot something.
Forgot to hook up that line back. Seemed to pull pretty easy.
And you know it never turns.
Pans are on the corner, that's something.
This one must have been where the paper's. Yeah. Uh, oh, boy. You have a good base center. One's a good base center. I'm going to wait to be on the top. Yeah. Any questions on the bills?
No, I have none. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Wayne to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
See if I can get the chairman to second it, I'll second it.
I'd ask once, and then I'd do it myself, but, second by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. We got a couple of minutes. You got any portfolio updates on?
Well, just maybe a little bit, you might know, might not know, but, uh, our maintenance helper that helps Jim, uh, resigned, I guess. So we're running an ad, and we'll be doing interviewing, and, and then the other part is the, uh, uh, they're working on the air handlers downstairs. So they put in some new... So, they put in some new motors and squirrel cage. But that filter used to be a rule filter, like a hundred feet of it or something. Now, they just have a filter box that you lift the lid and pull the filter out and put your new one in like, like a white man. Works real good. So, they're working on that today, I guess.
That's the which system?
How's that?
What system was that that they were working on again?
You said the air handler?
The air handler down.
Okay, air handler.
Yeah. No, the rest hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
I have a question for you. Do we have an update or where are we at on our completion of the courthouse improvements? They don't need that now, but can we get it to next meeting?
Yeah.
Percent done and percent paid?
Okay. I don't think we've made too many payments on it, but.
No, not. We're not supposed to make over seventy percent, I think, until everything's been approved by the board. So, I just want to get an update where we're at with that and if the costs are in line with our estimate. Just an update for our next meeting.
Okay. Um, I had a library board meeting last week, last Monday. Everything's going pretty good there. Not really many updates. Haven't been to a fair board meeting for a while. They usually have their annual convention in November. So, I'm assuming once they get back from that convention, they'll have updates as far as entertainment. And usually they center around the carnival when that happens and they, they can set the dates for the next year. Otherwise, that's all I got. Marv?
Okay, I can do this in two minutes, too. I did attend a Custer Health meeting last, and we'll talk about that at ten thirty, the results of that meeting. Other than that, we had with the road, but we're still discussing and planning on projects and we'll talk about that underneath road issues. I would like to add for our next meeting, Nodaco Convention information. They gave some very good seminars and I'd like to follow up and share that with the full board and the public. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we got the gravel ordinance. More within like thirty seconds, I think we can start. I don't think she has anything to present. She's just here because it's on the agenda. And it was, uh, we talked about, um, we approved that gravel permit for.
Yeah.
Baysons last time and we talked about some of the, the word, the wording on there, how we use some of the, reference the frac sand mine rules, so, and I think, Marv, you asked to put it on this agenda, correct?
To be truthful, Commissioner, I can't recall, but, uh, I will do some more work and we'll talk about it at our next meeting as far as reviewing the ordinance and that we have for our gravel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know how to say this, don't make it too difficult. The gravel ordinance has been in there for a long time. So, you know, we'll try to stay pretty close to that and fracking is actually a different cup of tea. I mean, that's a whole set of different rules, but the, uh, it, I mean, gravel is mining and, and we gotta, you know, follow those. So, if there's any, I don't know if there's any up or anything that needs to be changed, Marv, on that or not, we'll, we'll review it.
Yeah, I'll get it very specific. What we were looking for mostly was the reclamation and weed control. Because we don't believe that's in our gravel ordinance at this time or may or may not be, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. Audit?
Um, I believe that, uh, Marv requested this to be on the agenda as well, but we did have a little bit of discussion that, we need to be looking at who we want to have our biannual audit done by, I guess. I did speak with the state and they're gonna send us a letter. And when I get that information, I'll present it to you guys and then we'll make a decision at that time on who we want to. There was some talk with the auditors at the convention that there is a a private company that they, a lot of them are using that is no longer gonna be doing the audit. So, they're going with a new company that it's, and it's about twice as expensive. So, um, I believe it was McLean County had stated that it was gonna be about seventy-six thousand for them to perform the audit, so. Um, we'll get some more information from the state and we'll get some information from, I'll get some more information from the other auditors, but we need to be thinking about.
So, do we have an audit this coming?
I want to head to this.
This coming here?
Well, at twenty-three, we would audit twenty-one and twenty-two.
Reason I put it on there is I want to move forward with getting that out there. The sooner we send this out for an RFP, the sooner we can get on their calendar list before they fill up with their other clients. And the sooner we can get it done, it'd be more prepared when we prepare our budget next year. So, uh, I would like to send in an RFP and I'll make a motion to that effect. I'm gonna recommend the state. The state has suggested that, being they've already done one and it was rather expensive last year, that this year would be considerably less. That's as far as I'll go with that. So, uh, I want to get this thing moved forward. And, uh, I'm gonna move that we send out and I'm gonna make a motion to that effect. I move that we send out an RFP for a cost estimate. I'll, I'll hand this to you, Samantha.
Okay.
I move that we send out an RFP for a cost estimate for our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two external audit to the North Dakota State Auditor's Office and to Iain Bailey.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
Yeah, I believe I'll second that.
Second by Wayne. Discussion?
I think the only thing that, uh, we could add, I, I just wrote those down and all the name of the other ones, I've never heard of that. The reason I'm recommending the state auditor is because they made several recommendations. And they'll be able to follow up with those recommendations to see, uh, where we're at and getting those accomplished. And they also said it would be less expensive because they've got the groundwork and all the homework and all the information that they received from the previous two years. So, I think it would be a financial savings for us to go with someone who's familiar and has some background and can follow up on the previous year's recommendations.
The only thought I'd have with, I mean, um, I don't disagree with sending the RFP to two firms individually, but I think if we're gonna send out an RFP, we still post it publicly.
Yeah, we probably would, yeah.
You know, just because of our, our entity. But, um, requesting them to submit directly, there's, there's no issue with that. And, you know, just because it's, it's just a proposal thing, so it's no different than us soliciting for bids on a project or anything like that.
Reason I mention them specifically is that we don't want to overlook it and if we get it to them, we can probably get a response much quicker.
Right. Would we have a, uh, required date that we want proposals back? Or do we just wanna post it until we receive?
It's a very good question. I would give them thirty days. I'd have to change my motion. I'm gonna say at this time, no, because I don't want to revise my motion.
Okay.
I would expect an answer. Let me ask our auditor. If we do this, how soon can we send out that, that letter to those people? Can we do it in a week's time?
Yeah, I mean, I could probably have a letter out by the end of this week.
Okay.
And like I said, I've already talked to the state auditor's office and they should be sending their proposal already.
So, we're just walking through it formally, so we'll get an answer rather quickly. So, I'll leave that motion as stated.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I think that'll work, yeah.
Thank you.
So, no further discussion? Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye as well. That motion passes. We got nothing until ten. Um, portfolios are done, so let's recess until ten and we'll come back and talk about roads.
Doesn't look like Charlie and Ken are ready with it.
Ken's talking to me.
Oh, good.
I had a college class where I had three, um, of the full, you know, shared families, I had three of them, and eight, all three bags in one college class. I don't know, charity.
Just the plain ones?
Regular.
Yeah.
Well, he didn't go to sleep till midnight then.
I figured he would have crashed an hour or two later. Oh, I, in college, I drank three Mountain Dew's a day on average.
Well, I, yeah, I seen that in college, too, then. Them young guys, you're walking around, they have Dew in their hand all the time.
I still drink them, but maybe one or two a month.
Morning, Ken.
Morning. How many Dew's do you drink a month?
I don't drink Dew anymore.
You re, you resigned off of them.
Diet Pepsi every once in a while, but not, not diet Dew. Juice a week.
Yeah, they must, must have got a good buy on sugar because they're up to forty-some grams. Plus another additional twenty more or something. What? Four candy bars later.
I never did do the energy drinks though.
I tried.
Morning, Charles.
Morning.
Haven't seen you for a while.
One or two of them.
No, doesn't.
Didn't seem to do much.
I don't really try them. I had a.
Oh, we're gonna use that. According to, we're gonna use all that up and use some of that.
Just as well have a cup of coffee and calls good.
Yeah, I'm shooting, I think I'm shooting January. Because it's gotta be bid through the state, otherwise it would bid in like November. But with the timelines, I think it'll be January, probably on football target. Oh, sure.
You don't think a pot full? Just a cup and a half. Oh, man, you must have goodwill power.
Can't drink it because if I do, I'll.
Oh, oh.
Well, ten o'clock, we'll resume the commission meeting.
Gentlemen, you're up.
Sure. Yeah, I guess with the, the first thing on there, the task order was for the Mercer twenty-seven. I think we tabled that when I originally presented a couple of meetings back now till the budget was finalized. So, I would just see commission approval of that. And, um, we can kind of push the pedal to the metal on that one and try to keep it moving. That project is, again, just to remind folks, utilizing House Bill fifteen oh five funds as well as county allocated federal aid funds. Uh, we discussed this in, in detail, I guess, in our meeting with the state this week at the, um, Association of Counties. So, essentially, um, eighty-twenty split, split on both fund buckets of money that are utilized. I think the project cost estimate was roughly two point eight-five million. Those funds cannot be used to pay for one and other local match of either, either one. You can't use federal aid to pay for federal aid match dollars. So, I think you're, uh, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, and we had it in the budget, so you guys probably already wear this. Of that two point eight-five, it was like six, six hundred thousand, I think the county had technically budgeted, it was in that ballpark. I don't want to misspeak, um, for the project. Out, out of pocket.
So, is this County twenty-seven task, task order, is that for estimate a bid or what's that for?
For the design, for the design engineering.
Design engineering, that's all we're looking at this point.
To bid it out. And then, I believe, construction engineering as well. Yep, construction engineering as well. So, it's for the whole project.
So, the two, design engineering is approximately how much?
Uh, we have seventy-five thousand for preliminary design, field survey, hydrology report, then your final design is twenty-five thousand, so a total of one hundred.
So, we're, is this sending out an RFP? Is that what we're doing?
It, no, and no, not on this one, remember. These funds we can't use for, um, engineering services, consultant engineering services for this project. You're thinking of the bridge, the box project.
I'm just making darn sure when I, when I.
Yeah.
And trying to keep everybody apprised of that. So, we're looking to, uh, what is the task order? That is, to send us out to whom to do this?
The, the task order is nothing more than a contract between interstate engineering and, uh, Mercer County for the design services of the project on, and construction engineering services associated with the project.
That's very specific and clean. Thank you.
Yep.
I move that we approve task order, the task order for County Road twenty-seven for design and construction engineering to interstate engineering.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
Is that task order three?
Yeah, it's task order number three, uh, relating to County twenty-seven.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Wayne. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. I have the original here, Charlie. I don't know if you have another copy for us.
I just brought it in case, in case you didn't have one or.
Didn't keep it?
Yeah. And so, just a quick touch on that, too. So, I, the schedule as it's set up right now, we're shooting for a completion date of October of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, of course, we hope that it happens sooner than that or in the summer. It's all gonna depend on contract or schedule and availability. The bidding of this project will happen through the state, through the DOT. So, due to their schedules and how their requirement, if we weren't utilizing federal aid, I think we would probably target a November bid letting. But we, in all likelihood, will see it that occur in January based on, I guess, all the hurdles and stuff, the hurdle with it, so, yep.
What was that original date that they're forecasting?
For a bid letting?
Um, no, I think it was for the project or for.
The completion of the project, October of twenty-twenty-three?
Thank you.
Yep.
And then you want to shoot for November, you think?
Uh, January for the bid letting, January of twenty-three for the bid letting.
Do we want to put, uh, do we want to put a date on that bid letting?
Well, we, we'll, we'll establish that, we'll work with you guys, but the, the, the bid letting, I, I think the options, those are already pre-established by the state. And so, we can only bid on the dates that they bid projects and I forget what it is off the top of my head, I, I really do. I, I think it's January eighth and then there's, I think there's two lettings in January, I believe.
Okay.
I'll have to double check that for you, though. December's the only month they don't have a letting, so.
Okay.
Okay. Good for that. What's, uh, that one?
Next one is Rough Ride Electric, uh, utility permit, uh, number seventeen forty-four. It's to underground bore. Next one is Rough Ride Electric, uh, utility permit, uh, number seventeen forty four, it's to underground bore, uh, service up there north of, on County thirty seven, and right north of County eighteen, right north of the bridge. And it's, uh, well, they just wanna bore underneath there to get power from the west side over to the east side. So I looked at it, the location's good, it just needs your guys' approval to bore, to use our right of way.
I move to approve utility permit seventeen forty four.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
Second that.
Second by Wayne, any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Do you plan on doing that this fall yet, huh?
Well, I think, they were actually set up there last week and.
Oh, oh, okay.
Thought they were initially gonna go overhead and they went under and they didn't have their permit, so I, I talked to them and they, so they got it in.
Ken, Ken busted out his.
Ken, can you give me those county road numbers again?
It's a, it's underneath County thirty seven, just north of County Road eighteen intersection there.
Thank you.
I got this one signed.
Do you guys have anything else?
I, I did, if, if they're, and it's, I'll be brief, I promise.
Well, this is the permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, or else they're gonna hook you behind to pick up and drag you along.
Is it just one split or two?
Because you said, I know you told them, it's no problem, it'll.
So, just a quick update on, uh, Mercer County Box twenty nine, um, uh.
One sixteen twenty?
One sixteen, yeah, so, it, twelve, that twelve point one, that's the one, uh, John Shield, uh, by John Shields property. Uh, we were scheduled to have a pre-construction meeting today, actually, right now. And we ended up pushing that back because the contractor, uh, we'll see how it go, they're, they were told that they would have, have delivery of the box on October fourth. To our knowledge, that's not the case, based on conversations that the district had with the contractor. I was being informed something different by the contractor than what the district was informed during their conversations with them. So it was news to me, this literally, um, I became privy to this knowledge yesterday, right before a meeting at like eleven thirty with the state, so, my intention today, I'm gonna call the, the manufacturer that fabricates the boxes for Tera and ask them directly, when they anticipate this box being.
Poured or delivered or something, yeah.
Because, um, I'm getting a little mixed bag of, of information between the contractor and the district. We pushed it off, I talked about it firms, in my opinion, so we decided not to hold it. Contractor does have the ability to do this, they still have time, technically, uh, this project was bid with a, uh, an alternate completion date built into the contract, so if they started to work this year, then they had to have it, everything completed, substantially complete by November fifteenth. That window is probably closing rapidly on them, in my opinion, so it's very possible that they do not start this until the spring, which the contract allows. I believe the completion date, uh, for next year was June, June thirtieth, if I remember correctly.
So it doesn't have to be done this fall?
It, it, we would like it to be, I understand if they can't get a box, but they're telling us that they will, and it sounds like it's not happening, so I don't know what the whole story is.
Sure, you'll find out.
We'll find out. So, just an update on that, I didn't, I didn't wanna leave you guys hanging or out of the loop on that, so.
So if they get something, say they deliver it mid-November, would we probably have to pay the material cost?
Procurement, they could, they could solicit a request for that, that would happen through the state, remember, this is federal aid, so, that would, in all reality, be up to Brian Fuchs and the folks at the state, whether or not they would pay for that. Cause that's an eligible item, that's likely a hundred percent covered. So that's the ongoing battle right now, and it's interesting that you bring that up, because it's a, and I, I promise I'll be brief, so the.
It helps the auditorium.
Well, I mean, it, it affects our budget, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so it, um, I, I would argue that on this project, it is very unlikely, if nothing happens this fall, I would argue that it's unlikely that you will be spending any money on the project until next, next year, next spring. Uh, you know, and in any of these future, I know we have a couple of box culverts to our knowledge that are problematic, one, we already have a project underway that we received additional funding for, and the other one, we're, we're gonna chase funding on Mercer seventeen. Understanding the dynamic of the, of the market right now and, and procurement problems, we, we're entertaining the idea, you know, the county has the ability to, say, for example, um, if we get on this Mercer County seventeen box, uh, or bridge issue, it's gonna probably be a bridge replacement, full bridge replacement, due to the size of the structure. But it, you have the ability, if we, if we, if, say we, uh, we can put a box in there, we need to find that information out for you, so if you choose to procure the box ahead of time, before we ever bid it, say you used, um, Prairie Dog Funds, when those do, if, and when those do become available to procure a box, it will do a couple things for you. It'll help the contractors bid the job more realistically, it'll help drive down bid pricing, because they don't have to worry about procurement and contractual deadlines and liquidated damages, so that should help control bid pricing, and it will also, um, help with schedule, getting things done in a more timely fashion. So I think that's kinda the model that some folks that we visited with this week at the conference, other consulting firms in other counties are trying to at least consider, I mean, it's an option, we should look at it, right, so, there's a lot of, that's the simple form of it, there's a lot of things that have to happen in order for that to work out, which I'm, I know you guys probably are aware of, but, uh, something to think of when we start looking at Mercer, Mercer seventeen bridge, because that one, um.
So that can possibly be a box, then, right, or?
Uh, well, well, I, we're worried about that, I think it's gonna have to be a bridge, but if, in the event, say in the event it could be a box, based on the hy- hydraulic analysis that we do, we're working on that, we're gonna try to get you guys some information, just to get, get an idea of what we're really up against, cause that could drastically, that could drastically affect the cost of the project as well.
Oh, extremely.
Was, was that gonna be a wider, cause that, that road has been widened, but the bridge is kinda narrow spot on seventeen, so. Lower, yeah.
And it's in the, I think it's in the floodplain.
Yeah, because you just would fill the, the, right, the dirt over the top, whatever you need to get your grade, and it'd be, it'd be a nice fit, really.
Well, it'd be better than what we got going on right now.
And what we actually talked about doing was utilizing, um, the CBD funds that are currently still sitting out there for the design engineering element of that project, so at least you get this thing shovel-ready. Uh, you guys have that money available, it's roughly eighty one thousand dollars, that should be plenty to cover the design of this. The thought behind that was, in our conversations with Brian Fuchs, uh, if we wish to do that, we need to make the state aware, we need to get them a map and a cost estimate, they'll issue a CBD number. And then, from that point, you would go through a, a RFP process where you would have to solicit for a firm, you know, uh, to perform the work. And then, once that process is over with, the consulting firm that's gonna do the design work would be able to utilize, use those funds, so you guys could, that's a great way to spend that money, I guess is what I'm getting at, and what we kinda came up, or arrived on out of that meeting. And, and you can get that done and out of the way, the, the, the sticker, the hard part about this is, there's not a lot of federal aid available for bridge until, bridges until twenty twenty six, that's their next cycle. So, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the case, if we have a project shovel-ready, projects can fall through on any particular fiscal year of, of IIJA funding, where they could reallocate funds, and if we put in an application for that, that's due in December, they could shift funds and it could favorably work out for the county, where they say, these guys are ready to go. They, they can bid the project and, it's unfortunate that Project X somewhere else fell through, but we have money available for this one, let's help Mercer County. That's our best case scenario, doing it before twenty twenty six right now.
Twenty twenty six makes me nervous with current inflation and everything else, I mean.
It's a tough spot.
It's a tough spot, later's not better anymore.
Right, and if you recall, we didn't really find out about this bridge until literally one week after the application deadline of the first go-around with IIJA funds, so, it's just a hard pill to swallow, and I think they know that, uh.
Part of what Charles is referring to is that due to the lead time of getting materials for these bridges, sometimes a year or greater, that we need to get them ordered sooner than waiting till that time comes, then, then the bridge is out of service for a year. So, uh, we want to get, in order to get the material, first we have to get the design engineering. So, that's where we're at, we're talking, I'm talking specifically about County Bridge on a seventeen. So I think where we wanna go with that, and Charles, you can help me out here, I think where we wanna go with that is to ask for an RFP for design on that bridge at this time, right, or do we have to get a number from, uh, Brian Fuchs first?
Well, what we would do is we would provide a map and then the cost estimate to you guys, that you would turn around and submit, you would work directly with Brian Fuchs and say, here you go, can you please, we'd like to utilize our CBD funds for this, they'll give you a CBD number. And at that point, there is a process, and I can forward you guys that information, I can share that with you guys, so you have it to, uh, solicit an RFP for design engineering services through the state with Brian. It's a step-by-step process, it's all, it's out there, I found it, after the meeting, I went and looked for it, I found it, so we have that information for you. Doesn't, you can still work directly with Brian on it, cause I can't be involved with that due to conflict of interest.
I know what you're sharing is a little different than what we ended up when I walked away yesterday, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Step-by-step process.
There is one.
So at this point, we'd be too, be premature to ask for an RFP.
Correct, but we're not far away from it, cause we would want that, we, we also wanna put in an application in December for funds for consideration, so at least we're in the proper, right?
Can you get us the information that we need by our next meeting, so that we can request an RFP?
Yes, yep, and we'll have a good idea as well, cause we need to complete the hydraulic portion, or a, a, a brief hydraulic analysis, like Damon and I discussed with you, to get an idea of whether or not it can be a box, or if it's gonna have to be a bridge, we can, we can identify that before the next meeting as well.
No, good in, good engineer will get a box in there.
Okay, yeah. Well, we, we'll do it if it's feasible, let's put it that way. Feasibility needs to be reconsidered.
Also floodplain, there's a few, quite a few considerations with that particular fiasco.
I know, it's a, it's a sticker.
So anyhow, we'll look forward to receiving an information, sufficient information that we can move forward with an RFP at our next meeting.
Okay.
Did you have anything else, Marv?
No, that covered it.
That covered it?
Yeah, there was a little bit different information that he gave me this morning than what we talked about yesterday, so we're on track. And what we discussed yesterday was, moving forward with the plan, our board, due to the long lead time for materials that has happened since COVID, that we need to be more proactive on acquiring those materials and getting the steps done prior to.
So, uh, to lead, to lead into that, to, to, to piggyback off of that comment, so here's the other thing to keep in mind. I don't know, and I suppose you guys have a better pulse on, on Prairie Dog Funds than I do, as far as what you guys are thinking you may get, it sounds as though those buckets are filling up because of the oil rising price.
We know what we're getting.
So.
Approximately.
There's no reason to believe if this ends up being a bridge, and we are forced, our hands are forced to wait for IIJA funding, we can procure that at the time of this project, but we can shift our focus to this, um, box on, on Mercer twenty, twenty nine one thirty four twenty, and procurement of that box culvert, um, cause the, the fear with that one right now is, if we don't procure something soon, that they won't have boxes available for next year, it'll be a duplicate process, duplicate result of what we're experiencing with this John Shields Bridge right now. Where we bid it in the spring, because that's where our hands are forced right now, because of state timelines for bidding. The earliest we can get that project bid is their March letting, so when they even bid that in March, if a contractor gets the bid, and they, and they try, they place an order through Forterra or whomever they choose, it sounds as though they'll be lucky to get one by the fall. Chances are slim to none, they're talking about that right now, so, I don't know, and I know we don't have the, probably don't have the funds in place right now to order a box, we know what that box is, we know exactly what the specs are, we could order it today if we wanted to, if we had the money. I understand that, that's hard to do, but, um, it's just a thought. If somehow we, you know, we get, I don't know when, when they allocate, uh, Prairie Dog Funds, exactly, but.
Possibly fourth quarter this year, but likely first quarter next year.
Okay, so if fourth quarter does happen, it's something that we could consider there with those monies, because that will help drive down the bid prices come March, and then it will also help it happen, actually, potentially happen next year.
And, I mean, this isn't like a normal process, but it's not against the grain of the process, this is actually protecting prices and.
State totally allows it, they, yep, they, they allow it.
Just doing the steps rather than lump sum less, like the olden days.
Yeah.
You're talking to John Shields Culvert, right?
I'm talking, no, I'm talking the south of the crossroads. Twenty nine one thirty four twenty.
Yeah, the, the John Shields County one is, is already on order, it's just we're waiting for it, the other one has not been ordered, cause we haven't. Cause we haven't bid it yet, but if, if we, we can buy it, because we know it's gonna be part of the project.
Or you know it's the size of it.
But then it would be, instead of asking for the box culvert, it would be the installation price, you know, or, I, I guess I don't know how you bid it, but you would basically, Mercer County has paid, purchased the box and then.
So, right, they would be the installing of the box is what they would do.
So, when you talk about the John Shields Bridge to this individual about when we're actually gonna get it, can you talk about if we ordered a culvert for the Crossroads Bridge, when we could possibly expect it?
If we ordered it right now, we, we, the word, the, the word on the street, for lack of better terms, is we'll be, we'll be, we should be happy if we could build it in the, we should have it by the fall, but that window's rapidly closing.
How much is it, culvert? Can you give me the information?
I apologize, I didn't have that information with me, I should have, I can absolutely get it to you.
Yeah, email me that, please.
Sure.
And we're gonna discuss that at our next meeting, and we might.
It'll be a good day, it's only a four hundred thousand dollar box.
We, we may, may pursue ordering that at our next, or get, doing the legwork to get that ordered at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be something to look at, that's true.
Yep, there's no use dragging our feet.
Cause the question then becomes, and maybe I need to touch base with Brian as well, is that project, you know, if the county chooses to procure ahead of time, is that, in my mind, I don't see why it wouldn't be, still eligible for reimbursement.
Correct.
So, how do they handle that, is the question, I'll touch base with Brian on that.
Let's, yep, get whatever information we can, so that we're, hopefully can make a decision to move forward, whichever way that be at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the end of the day, you drove the price down somewhat, otherwise, we're, we're gonna be unflatable.
Oh, I apologize, it just hit me, I remember, we did ask this question about re- reimbursement for that. Um, Damon mentioned, the state doesn't allow early procurement for reimbursement, so if we choose to procure it ahead of time, we have to use local funds, and that is our decision. So that's why we targeted, sorry, that's why we targeted the Prairie Dog Funds, because it's.
Okay, so we can, at this time, assume that the county, any pre, pre-procurement has to be the county's expense.
Yeah, but you are allowed to use your Prairie Dog Funds or something.
Whatever funds we have, are expensive, all right?
Okay.
But let's still pursue that, so our next meeting, we can go to whatever step is next.
Yep, I'll get you a cost.
Would they require any type of deposit for that procurement, or, or would a contract be sufficient, do you think?
It's a good question, I'm sure they're gonna want some down, huh?
Well, I need to talk to Dale Heglin anyway at Forterra about this one over by John Shields, so I'll ask him that question.
Yep, that's what I said, when you talk about the John Shields Bridge, get, bring this one up and get all the details.
Dale, or Dale, uh, no. Dale, or Dale, no, Dale, sorry, deal with Forterra.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to say, what did Dale Hagland move?
I misspoke, I apologize.
Yeah, because I mean, if we can procure without a deposit, and don't have to make a payment until we have prairie dog funds, then, then we're setting pretty good.
Yeah, and if we do, we won't see what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm, well, I mean, tax reasons, I doubt he'd want any additional money by the end of the year, right?
Did you check out that culvert lining, did it look good? The culvert lining?
Not yet.
I haven't looked at it either.
Anything else, guys?
That's all I have, sorry.
Okay.
Twenty, yes, thank you, so, I, I can tell you I'll be quick and short, but I'm not, sorry, so Twenty-six, the overlay project is starting this week, they're looking, thinking about starting the milling process either tomorrow or Friday, so they can begin paving operations next week. That is the hope and plan from Bechdel Paving, per my conversations with Steve Berg. We have the staking done out there, we have everything ready to go for them. We're ready to rock and roll there as soon as they are, so.
Well, it's going to be kind of cold this weekend, but I think it's supposed to bounce back next week, so we should be all right.
It's running.
Yeah. So it's not.
They're, they're producing, right now, it's up and running, they're producing, they're, they're at Glen Olin Airport paving.
Oh, they did it, they're doing the airport down?
They are, so when they're done with that, they're scooting up, up Forty-nine up here to.
Oh, so the plants in Glen Olin, but that'll be.
No, 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 the plants now, and they're running it that way? The, the crew's coming up, they're coming up to start work on Twenty-six, right when they're done down there.
Oh, that'll be quick, yeah.
Yeah, it should be done within, within the week, you know, so, easily, yeah.
It's going to be kind of weird, they could go either direction on that.
Yeah.
You know, go up Thirteen, or probably, probably take the minor out, I would think, it's heavier.
So, good, good movement there, finally, finally got progress there, so. They should meet their deadline, contractual deadline, but just by the.
Because what was it, like the thirteenth or fifteenth or something?
Yeah, it's, it's the fourteenth, next Friday.
Oh, pheasant day. They'll be done.
That's what they're hoping for.
Yeah.
They're, they're running into issues, every contractor's running into issues with CDL, truck drivers, refineries and oil, you know, getting actual oil, they're getting all sorts of problems, and they understand it's their issue, not ours, but.
Yeah, sure.
They actually made a decision between a state job and this project, whether which one to take liquidated damages and not get done, they, and they've made, I think Steve wanted me to make this known, he chose Mercer County over the state work, he wants to keep Mercer County happy, so.
Good man.
He made that comment, I figured I may as well share it for whatever it's worth.
Well, good.
So.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else.
Thank you much.
Yep, thank you.
See you in a couple weeks?
Yeah.
Lots of information.
Did you have a sent copy of the task order that you wanted me to take now, or did you want me to, because I can make copies of that?
Like, Ken grabbed it.
Oh, Ken.
The one I sent, yep.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you, guys.
Yep. All right, Western Plains Public Health District.
Geez, we're right on time, too, boss.
Charlie did good work.
Okay, I asked that to be, we're asked, Erin put that on the agenda, and she asked me to speak for Custer Health this morning. We have been asked to change the name of Custer Health to something that might be more appropriate or definitive for that organization, and we moved forward with that. Custer Health has held several committee meetings and came up with a recommendation. And they looked at a lot of different names. At our last meeting, the board approved, with the county's recommendation, a name that they would like to have it called. So with that, I'll start the motion, and we can have a sec, discussion on this, and then I'll give you a copy of this, Samantha. I move that Mercer County approve Custer Health's recommendation of Western Plains Public Health as a new name to Custer Health.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
Second that.
Second by Wayne, any discussion?
I know, I know they had sent out information to, for, for the name change or ideas and stuff, right?
They're working with a consulting company, and then also with their staff and people who use it, and it was just a long process, and actually, it was actually kind of, I think it was difficult. We had two meetings on it down there regarding it, and this is what, as a result of all those different discussions, the consensus of what we would like it to have.
Any other discussion? I mean, it's, this is kind of almost a formality, but I think everybody is in, been in favor of allowing them to change their name, just because they work with so many counties, they gotta go through the formal process.
If, if the vote is, is approved, does that mean kind of Custer Health, by Mercer County, has one vote that expresses on the Custer Health Board, or what's your mind, so is this Mercer County's vote, and then it'll still be dependent on how the other counties?
Correct, it has to be three out of the five counties?
Yeah.
Three out of the five, huh?
Yeah, so this would be our vote to say yes, we're, we're, we're on, in favor of. That's good clarification, so, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mark?
Aye.
Wayne?
All vote aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else?
I've taken that name on the calendar for a while.
Yeah, I guess we wouldn't know when their effective date would be, but I would assume sometime next year. It's going to take a little bit.
I probably heard that date, but I don't have it committed to my mind.
Yeah, I don't even, I don't know if they did give a date, but I just, it's just a process that's going to take, but.
Along with that is, part of the name is the logo, and they do have an idea of what they want to use for the logo, and it's a somewhat generic to other public health organizations, so it's recognizable by people who serve Sinatro, however you're looking and searching for this type of service.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think that's everything on our agenda, so. With that, this meeting's adjourned?
Is it easier when I take right out the motions?
It does help, thank you. I'll get faster.
Well, you need to, I think it's easy if, if I know that I'm going to do that, that I try to help you out a little bit and be prepared. We did have another motion, but he changed the information this morning on that road.